All order are.
Let's be all wax.
Here.
Trust me, you know.
Yeah.
Plus the underdone, yeah, plus the Rosen lot, yeah, us to you. Yeah, let's see Scott.
Yeah.
Here. Because we all work and that's. Why? Both. Uh, it's this will for the presence. There's no. In the economy, you're moving. Oh. If I have recognized. The conversation. You're not. Visual recording available on those. Now. Uh. I was approaching my ability back to all. So racial. Three slide providing us. There so against. Nothing. Or for it. Um, next item on the agenda is considering of this. Uh, this with that circulated. There are minutes for the whole in. A ski meeting, I think. Five. That's their. I'm actually rest on the terrible. Google.
Next.
The move in second or they didn't say aye.
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 Motion carries. Minister, we will then include this. Next item on the agenda is public time. And this is where we allow members from public to go looking forward on topics that are within our pergium jurisdiction, but it's not listed. That's a specific item on the agenda. If you'd like to speak. About matter that is on the general access to the great of that agenda and it's called, we'll give you an honor. We need to speak then. If your address is on a separate channel, please let us know. Uh, you want to talk about it and take it off. Send it down. Uh, product there. Anyone who wants to feature, go out and speak with one, which is back to true. And then give it to the little family. This time is intended to not opportunity for uh, you may account as two bills for this. You have to say that this will not ordinarily be done by the fourth. If appropriate, you may add a little damage or other staff responding. That's the reason is raised. All features will move three minutes. They're all certainly in school. For our status policy, we're going to all public comments and so their heads. We have the all features respected, still without. We have all every volume. Name, be letting your business to write. Finally, please ensure to keep ready. Microphone. To sure all. Period. Is there any public? After all that, no. Alright, the deck back on the agenda is important case. First, uh, for. We need a whole justice in the whole. Uh. Well, it's worth yeah. Talk got a presentation update on six day. Asia part of the study. Work done. Uh. Scott, that might the possibility of. By the way, that's expensive. In all of the book house. And then we have. Up the guard must be like shooters. In the home. Next item on the agenda is finance committee, all that. Just leaving for what I'm at.
The finance committee met yesterday. We began to present any like the bills as install. Often more quiet. Also. We say these right here and we can find them. Uh. Uh, the transparency portal portion of our website. It is actually a path around. Useful readable video. We actually with about what's going on within the building. Uh. Got a conclusion opinion. Uh, we've known in terms of control findings, which uh. Built. This approach will be before we. We allow them to be celebrated with abilities. High standards required to receive the government, the unions, offices, associations. Specificed an achievement for excellence in financial support. Uh, and we also actually presented. Uh, when you also being the actual report, we sent fire pension funds. This uh, entry fund ratio increased slightly, which funded. Basically, we got caught up a little bit. Um, hold the prime bill. The permanent risk of the. Shit. In terms of big. All of the goals for you. Um, contributions will rose through various assumptions, knowledge changes. Getting a little less interesting than we thought we would and building little ones. Better consolidation occurred, etc., etc., and also. We use um, having more small. Uh, on the other end, we nonetheless succeeded on dealing with funding targets. Um, in place of our policy, we actually. What we said. Uh, we recommend. We discussed the monthly financial reports, who may step into new monthly financial point format, also. Absolutely. Uh, this is to track trends, better by original issues and improve. Basically, providing a precise. Transit. And we will commence. Uh, to get into it faster and learn. Overall, the general. But not only will we be revenue spending, see you. Both our budget targets and prior initiatives. Including bringing the taxes into the bill. Water fund, well, still respond to total revenues. Seeing budget expenses were generally as. We discussed the goals of semi annual debt service payments on this month's order gentleman. And we also talked about the number of changes that I wanted with various capital projects. There's good behavior. The committee reviewed progress on this year's capital projects. Running in particular with the construction, a new club house started. And the work on the water main centers will be up. The patient project. On addressing. And uh, it doesn't give you more this. Was it block not today or it doesn't play any. Point or right, okay, well, we're clear. God, alright, we'll hear you more later, but. Uh, last, we also removed the break. The committee also removed support in several donations. The name links to private events. We also talked about donations. Um. For the receipt of license plate notices. It matters of safety. In space. And we also talked about the end news classes. The committee and have a very sincere draw to the general.
Thanks for that report, the next report of the commission. Uh, starting now. Our representative on the commission taking materials here in front of me.
My commission now. But the commission will actually. By the Devon, I'm going down. Come on, post teams given his partner. The commission will also review recommendations of the comprehensive plan and discuss prioritization and strategies for its implementation of the end of the sphere. These will include the potential. Uh, for zoning and subdivision code updates and the possibility of a plan. Unit development of the ordinance and for.
That report. Uh, next report is the call by the committee. Ordinarily as trusty ball wax, but since Steve's. I'm asked our office managers spell on nano to report. We've all the advisor.
Thank you. Involved advisory committee met on Monday, the financial and operational report. You know, wait, less twenty percent over budget. And during the one week, we did not down our old clubhouse and groundbreaking for the new clubhouse. Very excited about. The groundbreaking ceremony was well attended and was also a great kickoff for President Buntel Golf Club new fundraising campaign. Uh, of course, it's not running the temporary facilities for restaurants, restaurant on. Clubhouse. And are we then coming a few times beginning on the two hundred and eight numbers. New record for our home. The new, the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July the first.
Very much. Next report is the sustainable guest course. Where you can represent now his first chance report of big.
It's much. This is beginning.
Anyone shop and drink.
We start with this. They don't really have. Champion on. Or I've met on day on set. Fast course working. Like a party to drink and try to come people. He's not like. Contribution. And will also be parent that could load the system. Terror cycle then. And the cyber. Uh, as part of our July third. Anyway, task force uh, continued remaining gathering uh, got any plastic bags. That's without discussing consultants. They don't really have. The village and donated, donated, started going back and sell on May the first. Two hundred and thirty seven cars. Well, the audience will be cycling information from its own zone. And I'm achieving fourteen, he will have a little bit of exercise. That is studying a bet. Uh, solid waste agency by the county, the friends, two hundred and seventy two. The next test was.
That word. The next report, we cannot take from each of the. We actually think that was down there.
Thank you. The Fresno Council for Revision and Community met on June second to the fun event and greet the board of the council. Um, the council supported events of writers speaking earlier in June. Pride Month and also finalized disposition about the. So what's. Um. Additionally, did you see if we discussed the Fourth of July event at the Park District? Yeah, the center room that G C S E will host during the Fourth of July to rate in the Morax Marlins Room at Village Hall. That allows for those who need to take time away from the noise of the parade. Uh, the council also approved a sponsorship to Writers Theater to support for July eleventh, Lenoel Prescott, Infinity Night and. Okay, it's right, Funka D C, which is Chicago's award winning Afro Indo Caribbean. After discussions with Writers Theater, it was determined that this uh, contribution was the most populated partner and support this event. Uh. Additionally, the G C S E is currently in discussions with Highland Park's Human Relations Commission. Regarding the possibility of supporting their date service in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Uh, that will be January twenty sixth. Uh, additional information here provided as support and the ships are finalized to the council. And that's regular, the scheduled meeting of the G C S E is long wait.
Thank you for that report. Next report is. I'm there.
Thank you. We listen to the commission in the community on June third. And this is a powerful discussion. We've been meeting with the village board. We continue to work on developing materials to address the board's request for additional information. A comprehensive analysis and set recommendation will be presented to the village board. I believe, which is going to be on the votes agenda for the August twenty first committee of the board. Uh, the folks also took a look at our Frank Lloyd White monuments. The. Process of recommending a condition assessment and next steps studying. Of four Frank Lloyd White monuments. We. We'll be of detailed that. And discuss future restoration efforts. We advance this work, the commission has engaged a consultant. In question, conformal, the formal proposal to estimate the anticipated wear costs for the monuments. The formal proposal event. Um. Be under review. Uh, in addition, they did review a demolition permit for one ten Linden Avenue. They reviewed the permit application and evaluated it and. And they've expressed no objections to the opposed demolition. Next meeting of the preservation commission is scheduled for July eighth.
Thanks for that report and of the direct all our our representative on.
The treaty commission has been busy at meet every month, it's every other month. Um, they. Did have their meeting on May twenty seventh. They consider a third meeting with the gearing. Uh, tough dates were provided by the staff regarding the village's twenty twenty five spring tree planting program. Um, they've also shared details on the I T E P grant award. Uh, for the Green Bay Trail project, this is a lead. Enhancements to the Green Bay Trail. Um, looking also at. Uh, statistics uh, on the spring buckling collection program, which is off to a very good start. Uh, updates to the clubhouse golf course uh, project including tree preservation. Um, also under consideration and coordination of art. Is coordination with the artist's greenhouse tree machine. I mean, this is a front project with the. Um, partnership. And then a review of the tree preservation efforts for the forest and subtlety. The commission also discussed many other topics, including tree safety guidelines. Review of the historic tree survey. A discussion on late blooming trees and oh. Um. Um. It was held on little variety of buckling. And. Tree really nice. It's definitely open to our weather, which will hit their favorite. The commission will review nominations in line and select the tree for recognition and the authority on the inside. Lemon call, thank you. Finally, the tree commission brings some ideas for public outreach. Um, including educational topics such as tools along property lines and creating a tree. Um, root of tree health resources. On the website. The next meeting is scheduled for August eleven and eleven AM at Village Hall.
Thank you for that report. That concludes the reports of committees. Next item on the agenda, officers, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a couple items on my report this evening, and I'm actually going to hand the. The verbal microphone offices and staff to provide these updates. Monica Simon, the public first director is going to give you just a couple of quick updates on our evolving schedule with respect to some of our larger construction projects. So may hand it off to one.
Chris, we have a certain panel with exposure and we thought that would begin this week. Um, so the signs are up, they've seen signed up with a flash and bag on them, so we're. Um, it's actually about one week. Um, scheduling with contractors. So we're anticipating that work will um, begin uh, early next week. Um, starting on Monday, you will be trying to. Limit traffic to local traffic only. That whole will be. So this was some of the days for many now. Hoping that this um. News has been went relatively. Um, all of this to um, have the start soon with our. Then we wrap up. Not working on that type of line. If it is not completed, we're sure that that will be. Open. Um, the second. Hold on, I want to talk to you about actually. But we've been closely coordinated. Over Sheridan Road, also the new. Um, so this is. Sheridan. Um. Right at. Initial table, thank you. That's so the teacher that are closing um, Hazel to Green. Um, Hawthorne, um, they're affecting. Approximately three days, they're ordering work uh, the road to various. So this is something that the village identified, you know, regime maintenance. Um, we notified them with the failure. And we've been working to get that here. All things together. We did. And see the. Time massive oils are. That folder. Um, and we've been updating.
Touch on, you weren't able to get through our last agenda item that the committee before, but I just the the. Box of the uh, update and staff, uh, I'm asking Monica just to update you at this point.
Well. Um. Uh, the. As I'm mission. If there was. So listen. We're all updated for barter water competition that we began. Actually. But what we're looking to do for the new. Is we're looking to put together a lot of systems analysis that look that should have been more supplied. So I know we want to stay doing analysis and study. Uh, we looked at. What is the type of market from the south? The west has not fully developed, and so this analysis will. All we can. Infrastructure that would be needed to support it. Um, how it would be. And how we can do. This study also includes a topic that we've been talking about, um, which is looking at our. Um, and making sure that they're profitable and upgrades with these made them and then creating standard operating procedures. For the the program we've already can. Um, she. That had. To um. Make upgrade for that. This study. So this study will include. For priorities for these. Items that the study associated with everything that's also going to create support for us as we continue to. Patient of. So we really need partnership um, in this study as somebody. Guys. These. They got the earth maybe on a big conversation. I'm just really understand what. Me, I'm shooting.
So we bring you guys a contract recommendation sometime later this year probably during the fall. Yeah. Yeah, we're generally developing our. Now. Thank you. Uh, second, I am. For tonight is just the confluence of many, many upcoming community events. Um, this is the busy season for uh, things to do in my. Uh, but there's a lack of coordination that's underway with respect to that, so. Communications, if there's any handle, is going to.
Um, somewhere down. We're fully paid off next. I don't have a meaning for them. Are giving for the heat first to them. For those that won't fail, for it's been canceled. Um, what I live is that. In the state, you would know. The same. Um, so I may actually stand in their prepared this year than that saying. Um, to also improve our businesses, our top of the. Paybar. Um, and we could. We talked there, so so very excited for the next few days. And the following week is Fourth of July, you hear or not, um. We use them as our safety place at this part. For the party of the park, um, getting a guy in the box on fireworks during. Four, they're the whole school of funds starting at K M with the first. Followed by Bailey, the park. They're also visiting the experiment in Park Park that'll go up until three thirty one o'clock. Setting off at its usual hours. Um, through the downtown. We also have my immediately downtown from from the low to the head. Um, who will also have a CD. As well, um, so hoping people will come and then nature of the down. And then the greatest starts. And we get to look at my music series, but also with the last summer returns this year again with three findings. Working on writers here on series of lyrics and search for time. Fireworks, actually, so we do some of that for and be providing. If that's. Okay, nice. Um, and then the last big event for downtown will be. Artists. Point at events for needed by under production. And features for artists. Alive. So lots of art.
Most exciting thing, though, to happen in my town ever, I think. At least based off of social media hits uh, and views is that a couple of weeks ago, uh, June sixth. The long awaited exit of our duck. Mascot in the lantern outside of Hiller Hall. If you recall, we had a duck decide to make a nest in a plant that's about three and a half feet off the ground. Um, and uh, she laid her eggs and sat with them for about a month. Um, and eleven duck wings hatch, um, just special shout out to our C P team. We really um, went above and beyond Public Works, did some research. Um, they installed a ramp that um, I will tell you is. One of the most hilarious things that you will like that you haven't seen it. Uh, you have Glenda, who was uh, the the duck. She, that was the name, that one, the name. Leadoff and all eleven of her duck legs followed. Um, in comic relief, like each one following their way down, but. Um, we have never had so much social media interaction with any folks in the village has ever posted in the last fifteen years and. Um, it just keeps growing. We have eleven hundred likes on Facebook in that post, which was about. One thousand nine hundred. We typically get when we're posting media updates and the like, but uh. This uh, just one of those fielded things that really does, I think, set what will part. Uh, from nearly every other place, um, that kind of. Theory of that and where a duck and duck lanes and the community just embracing. Some special things to say, but. Uh, may that all happen, and again, if they haven't watched it, the video is. We have. We'll be, we'll be publishing a voice version of. The uh, the the escape from the planter. Um, that Sammy produced, so. Let's just say I was asked. To do a voice. Do voices and. It was not my mouth shy. And here we are. Do that for you. No, I was, I actually, I I played the part. Anything's possible. Alright, that is the conclusion of the man in the corner. Is there any question?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is. President from Ford. So the management board. They move forward. And particularly back for a second, you know, you have. Why all these threats? I'm kind of afraid of it. But I want to look back for a second. Or is it? Moral day. Events defined by the. Society. Well, that's the yearly. And it was extraordinarily meaningful, I thought. Because the historical society investigates. The story of the. Name of our source who are on on that flat. And. And, yeah, and that memorial day, they talked about a new instrument. And it was. Rap, if you, well, they. Discovered different stories they told, Memorial Day. Without personal interest view, but. But they, this, uh, in the act, they told about, uh, the government, oh, it's time, it's time. Uh, a few different young men every year, but it's just rapid, and it changed Memorial Day from a theory. To, you know, sometimes. I was, I found it extraordinarily new, I remember the story, stories of these, you know, bad and heroes. Yeah, but I want to thank the historical society for that event, what they do. I'm going to be going to another historical society event. We, if they talk about the metro's role, that railroad. The historical society, we are better for what they, because of what they have done. I'm gonna say. Yeah, me, but also we have the village, how grateful they are on work with what they do is. I'm not tall, I'm not positive who did all the research. Um, but, uh, but two people who participated. Memorial Day, Karen Ellison, Barbara Hollinger. Those just. That next, I keep thinking. That, you know, whenever I see anything about the focus this year is one goal two. And I, when I see something about the world with two, it is way more real. Because the stories have been struck, so. Thanks to the, you know, I mean. Thank you for the heroes who sacrificed everything. But thank you to the historical society and Karen, Barbara. That's, that's the biggest president's point. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the consent agenda, which items that have been published online. Unity, they've been reviewed by the board members individually, Lawrence, Parker, to be false. And we don't think they require further discussion. So unless anyone has any further discussion now, I'll listen up to the second agenda. If there are notions to move, set.
So.
It's been moved consecutive, that's never will call.
That's the hallack.
Yes.
That's the other one. That's the other one, yes, that's the ruben well, that's the ruben, yes, that's the Scotts.
Consent agenda, move to the morning. Next items on the agenda are regular business, first item of regular business. This presentation and acceptance of the annual town financial report, the management letter, followed by. Anna L L P for the calendar year ending December thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, we had a financial community meeting about this yesterday, so I'll ask our assistant CFO, Albert Swords, to introduce the Y P.
Thank you, the name I said was. Um, to the weekend for people much. Uh, our luck is very long. Very good, I was leaving back in the summer, um, just preparing for our audit fieldwork. First time being with our authors, we bought our money. Eight, and then the auditors were onsite for the preliminary fieldwork January fourteenth. Where they were collecting all data and test their internal controls. The auditors perform file review work for two weeks at the end of February and beginning of March. And that was a combination of any person that offsite work. And then many more weeks in month of working, but it's not a very bad. Uh, as your approval of the calendar year twenty seven four annual financial report, all the public app heard. Uh, if the board approves the audit, we will proceed with all the required filings, the village trust company by June thirty. Uh, which included files for, for the act for remembering color bodies. The Illinois controllers report, the Illinois insurance report, the annual required debt disclosure, and the annual charter support as well. I also like to recognize our finance staff who took care tonight, and they'll be watching his. To thank them for all their hard work prepared for the audit, and especially to thank that people has managed to receive a call or a suit from her leadership during the audit, that's. Uh, J B Volkey was a partner for a lot of our remaining, who also presented at the finance committee about science. Uh, and then we have our principal, John Shaw, who's here receiving presents, and Joel and Doc, who kind of the audit board as well. And then he, La Boya, also assisted with the Illinois business insurance report that we have to, um, do. And so now, and as you know, John Shaw, who he's designed for a lot of our remaining, um, the audit by any sort of care for.
Thank you, Brandon, and, uh, can we get home and watch that duckling videos and thank you for that heads up. Uh, first of all, I thank Nikki, Margaret, and Diane, and the entire team for making this amount of steps a lot in here. Without your help, that's awesome, so thank you. I'm actually going through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker than I have received. And if you turn page seven, you'll find the certificate of achievement award. This award was provided for the twenty twenty three audit year. We have applied for a respective receiving segment for the point seven. Congratulations on the student title. As Trenty, you mentioned, you did provide a clean unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive, basically thanks that we found out to choose the meaningful control. Or the numbers as they're presented. The management discussions and analysis will begin on page fourteen. And this section really provides a summary of how the different fund and narrative forms. So if you have questions on punctuation from here to here, what the numbers truly mean, this is very broad, but let's see what's in. And the next thing I have you skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on page thirty five. Now, this is bottom of page thirty five, and what is the general fund? Which is your main operating fund, had a net increase of five hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Is primarily due to your expenditure below budget, especially when you're committing capital projects. So your general fund was left with a seventeen point one million dollar added fund balance. The notes of the financial statement, we did on page forty three. And the notes will provide further details of how we came up with the figures that we did, supporting expenses. Then there you're defining your balance of debt and your capital assets. I think the note for to you tonight, so I have to skip ahead all the way to page one oh five. Page one oh five is the start of your budgetary information, so if you want to see how specifically from the board based on what was budgeted, this is what you might want to see. So anyone have any questions? That is retired, so you can. Yeah.
Yeah, you could, uh, tandem, use their emotion, so rather than relax for the better, we want. My preference, I. Uh, hold, both, but. Be for the one, so, yeah. The new instructor, that's a little.
That's the hallack.
Yes.
That's the new levels, that's the other, yes, that's the Rosenwell, yeah, that's the river, that's the stock.
Yes.
Next, I'm trying to consider reason, or against, we are especially used for making, like, the first picture. Will need to do some structure right for that, yeah. Anyway.
I'm on, I'm more, this is a, uh, you know, a quest for especially on the private ways. Use a place, you know, the civil time, or in some places, that's construction, that is definitely time, time forward. But it's essentially maximum eight things, the power is maximum eight. Uh, this is in the work part back in the tenor property. Uh, because it's not really a, one of that properties, I'm full structure of that, it's pretty much. It's this secondary, that's an instruction thing. Um, typically, I think, in great, from both the zone board, uh, to the most, with their issue. All of the Z D A can only increase by. I mean, it does allow additional days to speed access. Which means like, you know, we're done at five percent. Uh, for the post, this is consolidated, uh, several, it's nine total, um, storage, and we have still it, for the total effect in fifteen thousand feet. Is we one group going, um, approximately fifteen thousand. Uh, the existing goals are kind of all over the place, that, um, some is middle is less than five, maybe higher plus. Uh, this is like, we might need to be extra policy for. And the, I. Plan for consolidating all in one, uh, exercise. Uh, the S P process, uh, is only commission, uh, in the first step of this process, the government commission holds a couple of year. And then to recommendation, I hope it's very self, this month, and recommendation, uh. Thank you, I think, well, that's comment. And to the realist board based final resolution about, specifically the final thought. Uh, again, uh, circle here on the screen, I, I read the location of all these existing buildings back there. We buy large buildings and huge model sheds, someone with nine buildings, um, which all been moved and consolidated in this one building. Uh, along with this, uh, the purpose to this proposal is to configure the driving, parking act, the parking access act, and currently couple buildings. Um, on the south side of this, uh, right, so far, um, that are. Uh, in essentially the driving back, contributing by all my classes. Uh, the act, I think, saying that all changes associated with this, it starts lighting, landscaping, fencing, additional streaming, uh, some changes to the. Baseball field there, those are all the, um, core requirements, and no additional variations of that. The only thing being considered, other than we think is only, is the, uh, additional height question. Uh, here the site plans, north is to the top here, this is going to open clockwise, I'm increased, so to the right of this site plan, the north. Um, I need to go to the back, and it's not a property. Um, there's a variety of style set back, there's a simple family home is there, uh, to the west of property. Uh, and we can follow this site. Um, currently, the instructions are a little less than five. Um, the new site set back have just over forty. Uh, to the side. That, that probably the one that have the most, uh, impact. Uh, the applicant has proposed some, uh, penalty, landscape string, uh, along that west side property line, there's really a variety of things. Um, along those, along that west side of the line, uh, I'm talking about this, we're talking about some. About certain things that were said, um, they're fencing, fencing forward, but the applicant is committed to working with me, who's long that was. Actually, it's kind of, um, fencing, and, uh, it also throws a landscape background, and for mention moment, up moment. Uh, sorry, because you do recommend, uh, landscape screening, yes, just. Uh, again, reconfigured driveway access parking, uh, there are current buildings there on the left side of this, um. You're top of a site plan, uh, the applicant has said that, uh, we're coming for permanent all of the, all of the mess. Of all the plants, so, uh, no further variations of that. Uh, the dumpster and storage materials, and no, but it's only believe please, um, this is proposed by the, we need to show my code. Uh, there are limits, that we saw that, of course, this is something called for the soft, you know, crack. That's all, like, equipment out there. Creating, um, and that's. Here's the building, um, so the top here, you can see, uh, the, the south, which would be a drive in from the main road. Uh, heading north toward the property, you can see. Um, the most likely for any sort of the public commons that we got, it was today, which is on the bottom of West Innovation. Um, you can see the thirty foot, it's not entirely, but it's thirty nine cent and top one. Uh, that's so. Uh, that it's a, um, in that section, uh, here, there are some interior, um, sections that show. There's two levels that are, that poses some storage. Uh, west of the issue. Uh, north, you can see some parking, some, some vehicles there, this would be, uh, if the effects, um, in similar, and he's definitely doing some interior. And this is the rendering, uh, south, um. This is the proximity, we talk about, uh, recommending, uh, both zoning commission, this is, I mean. Uh, this is approximately southern, southern management, but that's really recommend why. In conclusion. Into, um, when we talk about machines, approximately. Running commission held a public hearing earlier this month, uh, they heard comments with three neighbors, all of them regularly. Um, I'm trying to express some concern about that specifically, um. Um, one neighbor expressed some concern, uh, I, that's going to give, most of the part, uh, part of it. Uh, most of the discussion, concern, uh, springing, uh, uh, instances. Gates access, um, neighbor said, um, the bottom half, eight current with, uh, out of that, right? Excuse the access to the immediate center property, and they want like. Um, there are a lot of defenses there, there's a lot to talk about, different things that really didn't, uh, probably want to source. Better, some of them want elephants and see how to do the, uh, baseball league department. Uh, so the zoning commission not recommend any single fencing requirement, uh, other than to maintain a access. Of this rate, so new fencing, per the zoning commissions recommend, you know, if you get, uh, in, uh, the dock, it's just, um, that just, you know. Of this, we need to, uh, make sure they have access. Um. Some also, uh, some also requested, uh, nice experience, uh, on a nice thing. Uh, so where the zoning commission, uh, landed on this was to recommend two conditions, one of all, and to make it a big access. And second, to have a legitimate streaming, uh, from the north end of property to the south, and, uh, I've. Cracked right down the address, didn't issue there, uh, it's one of the addresses there, read that by Martin Nance, uh, along by some. Uh, ready made one in a station, and they have the sound. So we've mentioned, recommend this, this, uh, which covers pretty good, you know, the fun. So, uh, next step, this is the final stop, um, this process, um, emotional, they know it's a good, deny, and actually, uh, ordered, outing, changes, bigger without change. Over yet, ordinance, the excrementing includes two of the zoning commissions, uh, two recommended patients. From this, so we adopted the by motion. And that is any questions right now.
So, thanks for your report, uh, in what can be tried to. It's something more responsive to the neighbors, somebody might have some of that, here to keep getting to do. This case. It was, you know, made their presentation, and so for concerns to the joint board and common board, I made it that. We have a sign sheet that shows who get our representative with the partners here, uh, is there anybody. Along the neighbors who wants to speak out, say, or happy, but the soul. Speaking of, that suggests to me that our system works, is working, um, and that we provide good way to accommodate. Part of this, we think, I'm due, uh. I'm happy to hear from the partners, but, you know. You're ready. This is, you know, okay, so you can say, don't stand to defeat from the jaws of victory, uh. Let's, there are any, let's keep like, this is going to make it, so our best decision is that. We are a motion to. Orbits. Uh, most of the, okay, there's that, second, second. Second. The remote.
Trusty Hallax.
Yes.
Trusty Neil Wells. Trusty Anderson, yes, trusty Rosenwell, yes, trusty Ruben, yes, trusty Scott.
Thank you. There's. Our secret. Project. Next item is consideration resolution, bottom part is the project management service remit. A L U dot L L C of maybe with the soda. With the golf, sustainable, you have. In the mouth, I can see. Now.